Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm your town clerk, Betsy McCauscher. And I'm going to take the role for the newly elected town council. So we have, when I call your name, please say aye. David Atwater.
Aye.
Patrisse Granatowsky.
Aye.
Conrad Heed.
Aye.
Rachel Franco.
Aye.
Rich Murawzak.
Aye.
LeAnn O'Bri.
Yes.
Juliette Parker.
Aye.
Rita Schmidt.
Aye.
Joseph Hury.
Aye.
Welcome. Okay, raise, if we'd all stand through the slute with a flag. You can have Heather Summers lead us in the slute.
I will lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna have you stand, I'm going to end this with the oath. You would all, God's gonna say remain standing. But you're faster, faster than the seat that I was to the statement. If you raise your right hands, and do you solemnly swear our test that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the United States Constitution, the state of Connecticut Constitution, the Town of Groton Charter, and all the duties bestowed to you as a town council, to the best of your ability, without prejudice to any body, any group, or any subdivision in the town, state, and, and world. There we go, the whole world, why not?
Why not?
I do.
I do.
Congratulations, you're now an actual council. And the next order of business is the adoption of the 31st Town Council Temporary Rules and Procedures. And I'll entertain a motion and a second.
I make a motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the temporary rules for the 31st Town Council, say aye. Excuse me.
Aye.
Want to just make an amendment? Oh, too late, too late. Okay, we'll deal with that later. That's what you're gonna do, though, adopt this. So now you can actually do business.
Okay.
That's why we adopt temporary rules. So now we'll have the election of the mayor. And at this point, I will accept a nomination from the floor.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Councilor Patrisse Granatowsky for mayor of the council, the 31st Council.
Say second, Beth. We've got two seconds.
I have a second.
And a third second. Any other nominations? I need to move-
The nominations be closed.
I second.
So moved, all in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so, all those in favor of Patrisse Granatowsky as the chairman of the council and be known as mayor of the town. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Congratulations. Last but not least, and then I go sit in the corner, is I, I'll actually present to you the gavel. This is, we'll hope that you use it sparingly, but when necessary. And don't knock anyone on the head.
I won't.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
These are your citizens petitions.
Okay.
And you're on.
All right, I'll scooch over. Thank you very much, thank you, everyone who came out tonight.
What?
I have to interrupt.
Oh, okay. Shall we amend that?
Now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out, thank you for all those at home. We just wanted to make a brief statement before we started on things. So to the people of Groton, we thank you for entrusting us with this awesome responsibility. Our priorities are to work together to respect and value all of Groton, to pursue smart economic development, working with our business partners while balancing the needs of the community, to advocate for strong schools, assuring equal opportunity for all our students, to support strong public safety and community policing, to develop our parks and recreation, and to safeguard our natural beauty, and to make informed public decisions that will result in positive, long-term plans. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our town. We also thank our predecessors for their time and energy devoted to Groton. We are here to do our best for you, to honor your trust, and to work cooperatively to grow Groton together. Having said that, we're on to item seven on the agenda, the appointment of the Rules Committee. Is there a motion for 2017-0278?
So made.
Second.
Okay, so we have Councilors Hury, Councilor Heed, and Councilor Parker as the suggested members of the Rules Committee. If you agree, we can take a vote on that.
Yeah.
Are we acceptable? Councilors Hury, Councilor Heed, and Councilor Parker. If there are no other people interested in serving on the Rules Committee, we can take a vote on that. Okay, so all those in favor of those three councilors serving on the Rules Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
That pass unanimously, nine zero. Recognitions, awards, and memorials. I have one. It is Councilor O'Bri's birthday. So happy birthday to Councilor O'Bri. It's quite a birthday present, eh?
Boy, I guess I'm gonna sing.
Happy birthday.
My gift to you is I won't sing.
Okay.
Okay. On to item number nine, receipt of citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens petitions portion of the town council meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the lectern, over here, and state your name and address for the record. So this evening, we have two people signed up to speak. Amy Gresham is the first. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations, and congratulations to the new council members. I'm here just really as a follow-up to the previous town council meeting where, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, I jumped right in. Amy Gresham, 45 West Main Street, Mystic. So as I said, I'm really here as a follow-up to the previous town council meeting where I asked for a noise ordinance in downtown because what is happening is a bar has moved in Chapter One, and they play their music very loud and late into the late hours of the night, particularly for some reasons on Mondays and Saturdays. I don't know if they have a DJ or what's going on. But in the last, so there, I brought a record of the police calls to the Groton Town Police, and it's just covered six months, but it's 27 calls regarding the noise. Let's see. What I was told by the police officers, who are very helpful and very generous with their time, is that I need to go to the town council to ask for a noise ordinance because they, there is nothing they can do to enforce a sort of a noise restriction or just general respect. As you know, downtown Mystic is both residential and commercial. In the evenings in particular, it does, it does tend to lean more towards residential because most of the businesses are closed at that time. And while we live downtown and we're, it's something we want to do and live in that area into the late hours, excessive noise and so forth, we don't think it's fair. And again, I would just ask for some information in terms of what might be the follow-up to this request and where I should go to follow up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Next on the citizens petitions is Heather Summers.
Good evening, my name's Heather Summers. I live at 67 Ramsdale Street, Groton, Connecticut. And I am here solely to congratulate Mayor Granatowsky and the council. And most of you I have met, some of you I have not. And as your state senator, I wanted you to know personally that my phone is always on, my door is always almost open. And I want you to feel free to contact me at any time concerning any matters pertinent to Groton that you would like to discuss. And I have had a very good and open relationship with your town manager, who I think is doing an amazing job such a short time on the, you know, in the new position. And I try to keep everyone as updated with the most recent and current information that I possibly have so that you all know what's going on because when you're asked by constituents, you know, what's happening up there in Hartford, at least you're well armed and you know exactly, you know, the latest and the greatest. So I have some information to give you tonight, which is a lot of nothing, actually, but it's the latest and greatest, which is we are trying to be able to go back into session in the next seven days, to fix some things in the budget that have really been surprising for most of us as legislators. We, as you know, we are out of balance, we need to fix that in addition to some other things like the MSP, which is the Medicare Savings Plan, which is having a very negative effect on many of our citizens here in Groton, and it needs to be fixed. We are committed to fixing it. Where we are now is three out of the four leaders, because we're in special session, we need to have a commitment from the leaders to be able to go back into special session. And we have three out of the four. The one person who is not committed at this point is one of the ones that's key to making us go back in. So we're hoping today the leaders met and the discussion will continue. We are hoping that in the next seven days, we will be able to go back in and fix some of the things in the budget. Obviously, it's a very detailed budget that have been found to be very problematic that we can take care of. And I just wanted you to know that. As soon as I know when we're gonna go back in, I will let you know. I usually contact the town manager. I can certainly copy you on everything if that's what you would like, but he's very good at sharing the information with everyone. So I just wanted you to know that. You can call me at any time, I'm up early, up late. And I want you all to feel comfortable to reach out to me should you need something. Obviously, the Senate and the House have to work together to fight for Groton. So I want you to know that I'm committed to meeting each one of you individually, and I hope you will feel comfortable to be able to reach out. So thank you, congratulations, and congratulations as the new mayor. I'm sure you will steer our community well, and I hope you enjoy, good luck.
Thank you very much. So those are the only people that have signed up. However, it looks like we have another person would like to speak. Late as usual. Welcome, Sir.
Genevieve Surf, 60 Hillside Avenue in Noank. I'm absolutely thrilled to see you all here tonight, and I want to congratulate you on getting these seats. I'm very amused to see that when I got in on the town council a few years ago, we were the first, I think it was the first time we had a Democratic majority on the council. And I don't know, I don't know whether we did a good or bad job, but we rapidly got swept out the next, the next election by all Republicans. And it's very amusing to see that two years later, there's another sweep for the Democrats. So it just goes to show this is a very vibrant town. People are, people are paying attention, people care, and I think that's rather wonderful. So I congratulate you again on what you did. And I'm, and I'm here to actually petition for a change in the rules because somehow, when I took my political hat off a few years ago, the rules changed. And I, there was something that I wanted to speak about recently this fall. And I went to the website, and I realized there was only one council meeting per month and two committee of the whole meetings. And since the rules, same rule applied, that you could only speak at a town council meeting, that meant that citizens could only speak once a month. And since you have two committee of the whole meetings in, during the month, where you bring up all kinds of issues and where all the major discussions take place, that leaves us citizens unable to give any input when there's something important or complex. And I think as a Democratic council, you should be more than willing to receive citizen input because, you know, we do generally, when it's an important issue, people in this town have a lot to say. And on top of it, our times had gotten reduced from originally 10 minutes, when I moved back to Groton, to five minutes, to now three minutes. You might consider the possibility of bumping it back up to five minutes because I recall in the past when we had complicated issues to talk about, such as when we talked about the phase-in of the revaluation, there were a lot of numbers involved in presenting the case, and it was really hard to do. We had to sort of tag team in order to get all our numbers in and to get, you know, things done. So I don't know, the time is sort of up to you, but I would like to see at least two times a month, if you're gonna stick to the one council meeting and the two committee of the whole meetings, which I think is actually not quite right either, because a lot of us would like to see more council meetings, you know, the way it was in, in, classically, they were all council meetings. And then somehow, the committee of the whole meetings began to be televised, and now the committee of the whole meetings has sort of taken over the process, which, you know, is probably not quite right. A town council meeting is a town council meeting, and that's where a lot of the discussion should take place. As it is now, all the discussions in the committee of the whole meetings, and you basically just rubber stamp the resolutions in the council meetings. And it's sort of, that's kind of upside down. So you might want to look at the way things were done in the old days, the good old days, and maybe go back to a more sort of a classic schedule. So that's what I have to say about the rules. I also wanted to say one more thing, that I've moved, and I'm across the street from the Noank Public School Gardens. And as, in spite of my complicated move, I fell in love with those gardens again, all over again. And I know we made a presentation a few months ago in the previous council. I'm on the task force now, the previous council gave us a few more years. And I wanted to say that I, one of the things that I did is I went to the American Community Garden Association Conference in Hartford this summer. And I was incredibly impressed and touched by the thousands of community gardens that sprouted up all over the country, for the purpose of growing food for the needy, mainly. And also, you know, the amazing side effect of this is that the children that have been involved with these gardens have been really incredibly wonderfully affected. A friend of mine just told me Cornell University is having a three-day conference all about children's gardens and children and community gardens this summer. So it's a really very big thing, and we want to become very much more involved in that. You probably don't know that yet, but we have a much more activist plan going forward, and hopefully at the next citizens petitions, which will be soon.
We have one minute, please.
Okay. I can, I can bring you copies of our plan and maybe discuss that because I happen to know, having sat in all your seats, when budget time comes around and it's crunch time and you're desperate to try to keep that mill rate down, you know, it's an easy decision to make to sell a property like that. That poor property is always on the chopping block. And I'm pleading with you to give us a chance to try to show you what we can do with children. I've spoken to Fitch, to the director of Special Ed. She's very excited about bringing some of her kids over because they want to develop landscaping and gardening as a career. So we have, everyone I speak to loves the idea of working with kids, and even with parents who want to learn how to grow things. So, so I, that's just my little pitch right now, I'm not gonna burden you with anything more.
That's time. Okay. Thank you very much. And that is everyone that we had. So I see Representative Conley is here, and this gentleman as well. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir. I will?
Good evening, I'm Zell Stever, and I live at 81 Main Street in Groton. And I'd like to first start by congratulating you all for being elected to the Groton Town Council. And thank you for your willingness to serve our community. What you have ahead of you is a difficult job, one that'll take a lot of patience, but I think very well worth it. I would hope that you will collectively provide a strong, sound, and thoughtful leadership for our community during the next two years. I would hope you would provide a positive face to our community and work to change the current negative and divisive political scene we all experience in Washington DC today, and work in a bipartisan manner. And I'd like to finally thank you and wish you all the best during the next two years. Groton is a great place.
Thank you, Mr. Stever. Representative Conley.
If you guys don't mind, Representative Delacruz and I would like to speak together. If that's okay?
That would be great.
Do that a lot.
We do that. Yes, we do it well. So we'd like to congratulate all of you on your new appointments and your commitment to serve the town, and we wish you the best. We are there for you as we have been whenever needed. So feel free, I know everyone has our cell phones and our emails and all of our contact information to answer any questions or provide any guidance that we may help with any matter you have.
Well, congratulations from myself, too. I can't imagine how excited you are, I remember how excited I was. And when you take one of those first, first or second vote and realize that you're voting for 40,000 people and the direction that you're gonna take us, I know it's gonna be in the proper and right direction. I really am very excited. And also want to make sure that you guys always are able to call us in. We want to make sure we have that connection to Hartford that I think is needed. And we're here to do that, and hopefully move ground forward together. So thank you guys for everything.
Thank you very much, both of you, for coming out.
Just have a drop-off for Councilor Parker from New Dorvers.
So once again, that's everyone that's signed up. If there is no one else that wishes to speak, we'll move to item 10 on the agenda, which is responses to citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. Oh, yes, certainly.
Just a response to the Chapter One. There is a permit that's required for the, that handles the music as well as outdoor seating that Chapter One is lacking. We had started action to force those permits, and they're in the process now. Once those permits are in place, we will have more authority to, to, we'll be able to force it, more of the rules once they're in place. But that's in progress, hopefully we'll have something soon, so.
Is that just for outdoor users, like they last, and then indoor, and it goes, and it judges out?
I think that'll be discussed, too, but until it goes to the process, I'm not sure. Let me give you my card, too, and you can call me anytime and get an update, or I can get your email.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. So if there are no responses, we'll move on to item 11. Do you'd like to respond?
I just wanted to speak to the last speaker. I'm only speaking for myself, but I think I'm also speaking for this whole group. Harmony is something that's very important to us. We want to show the proper respect to the people of Groton. And we are here to listen and to not judge. So I hope we'll have a room this full every time we meet. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So on to item 11, consent calendar. All matters listed under item 11 consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will take place unless cause is shown prior to the time council votes on the motion to adopt.
I make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Second.
So moved by Murawzak, seconded by Heed. All those in favor?
Seconded by?
Oh, it was multiple people, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, as long as we get somebody written down. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of moving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Moved unanimously, nine zero. So on to communications and reports. So we'll go around the table, town councilors. Councilors Hury, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Schmidt?
No report.
No report.
Gee, if I could remember, but nothing.
So thank you for it from the arc. I want to thank you for sending it in for us, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I received a communications from Mrs. Marlene Estabrooks. And she lives on 3 Allen Street in Mystic. And she had indicated that the Department of Transportation had put up a sign, arrow signs by her property, and she felt that it's not necessary. And she had asked the town to look into the matter, and I understand that the town manager is reviewing the circumstances. So Mrs. Estabrook, we are looking at it.
Thank you. Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The representative town meeting, we'll be meeting their first meeting, which is for this newly-elected RTM, 31st RTM, on the 13th of December at the Groton Senior Center. They will meet at 7:30. And they do have an item on their agenda, besides adopting temporary rules and such, and that is the ordinance to combine planning and zoning and to create just a planning commission. And the action is veto-only. The council adopted it on the 8th of, of, yeah, the 8th of December. Oh, boy, 8th of November, excuse me, 8th of November. And they have 45 days to, to vote veto. So that's the item that they have.
Thank you. And clerk of the council?
I don't have anything to report.
Right.
Unusual.
So on to-
Except Merry Christmas.
I'm sorry?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Town managers report.
Evening. First, I just wanted to welcome you all on board, and I'm sure we're gonna accomplish great things together. Just a couple of quick announcements. The Economic Development has a new website, standalone website, a very robust website. It's www/expormoregroton.com. Again, www-expormoregroton.com. I encourage you to go take a look, it's gonna be a great tool for us. Other than that, there is a Santa flying in at the airport on December 9th from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. You can take a picture of Santa by donating a non-perishable food item, which will be given to the Groton Food Locker, so good cause there. And then Groton Human Services will be, new thing, Groton Human Services will be, are soliciting food donations for the December holiday food basket distribution. They're gonna do about 500 baskets, or baskets for about 500 families. Donations can be dropped off at Human Services Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. That's to Fort Hill Road, up to December 20th, so another good cause. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor?
Yes. Hiding in my paperwork. It's, there's going to be a presentation remembering our veterans. It's a directory of Groton veterans and war memorials. And it was put together by our town historian, Jim Streeter. And he's going to have copies available, also a lively discussion about what we actually have and where in our town. So that's going to be December 12th, 7 p.m. at the Groton Library. That's Tuesday, December 12th, 7 p.m. at the library, Groton Public Library.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so we're on to item 13, new business. And we are going to need to suspend the rules in order to adopt the meeting schedule.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
I second. So moved by Heed, seconded by Parker. So all those in favor of suspending the rules to consider item 2017-0258, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so the suspension of the rules passed unanimously. So I will accept a motion to entertain 2017-0258. Moved by Heed, is there a second? Seconded by Hury. Any discussion on this? This is just changing the time to 6:30. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of item 2017-0258, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passed unanimously. So we need to suspend the rules again. Suspend Council Rule 7B to consider an act upon 2017-0261. And this is the COW meeting time. So is there a motion to suspend rules?
Some rule.
Moved by Schmidt, and seconded by Hury. So all those in favor of suspending the rules to consider 2017-0261, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So the move to suspend the rules passed unanimously. So now I'll entertain a motion to discuss 2017-0261 COW meeting schedule.
Some rule.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by, by Murawzak. Any discussion? Again, this is just changing the meeting time. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of adopting 2017-0261, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, moved unanimously. Need to suspend the rules one more time. Suspend 7B, and this one is to consider 2017-0262 Personnel and Appointments Committee regular meeting schedule. And again, we're changing the time on this. So is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider this?
I make the motion.
Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Franco? All those in favor of suspending the rules to consider 2017-0262, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
There's one abstention, that was Councillors Zepary. So it was eight, zero, and one. So the rules have been suspended, so now I'll take a motion to consider 2017-0262 Personnel and Appointments Committee regular meeting schedule.
So moved.
Moved by Atwater, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Again, this is just fixing the time of the meetings.
I'm sorry, are we fixing the time of the meeting?
Yes.
I must be looking at the wrong section. I thought this was making appointments to miscellaneous ad hoc committees.
We're not there yet.
We're still here. We have to have two votes.
Is there any other discussion about setting the meeting time for the Personnel and Appointments Committee? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of 2017-0262, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? That passed unanimously, nine-zero-zero. Okay, and that takes us to adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Counselor Heed, is there a second?
No.
Is there a second adjourn? Seconded by Muravsek. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstaining? Can I get to bang the gavel?